A quorum being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on November 9th, 2009. It was published in the November 12th, 2009 edition of the Middle Borough Gazette and was posted by Constable Thomas Robinson on November 10th, 2009. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. For this meeting, I have appointed the following people as tellers. On the left, Marilyn Hunt; in the center, Joseph Chamberlain; and on the right, Bob Canessa. They have been sworn into office by Town Clerk Janet Tracy. This meeting will be operated in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, the Town's General Bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume of town meeting time as the standard for conduct at Lakeville Town Meetings, to continue this precedent. You will note that there are two microphones which have been positioned on each of the two aisles. I ask that if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name, and if you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to length of time someone may speak. Generally, that has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that the speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. I would also ask that if there are strong emotions relative to a warrant article, that we address the article and not the person who has put the warrant article up. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. In the case of zoning articles, I will seek the report of the Planning Board and receive its report of its public hearing. Then, any other registered voters may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the yellow-colored voting card issued to each registered voter when you arrived this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask you hold up your voting card and keep it elevated so that the teller can see it and count your vote in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that the votes of registered eligible voters only are counted. I would like to remind you that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium, and I would ask that all electronic devices be turned off. Let us stand now as I lead you in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ma'am. Finally, I would like to introduce those onstage. We have at least one missing. We hope we catch up. To my left, Janet Tracy, the Town Clerk; Rita Garbutt, the Town Administrator; Kay Doyle, the Town Councilor, a little lost, but we know she'll be here soon; Derek Maxey, Selectman; Chuck Evers, Selectman; Nancy Yates, Selectman; Steve Olivier, Finance Committee; Melissa Hopkins, Finance Committee; Mike Petruzzo, Finance Committee; James Hanlon, Finance Committee; and Cindy McCray, the Town Accountant. I now ask, does everyone have a copy of the Town Warrant? You should have got it when you checked in. If you do not, please raise your hand, and I ask that one of the counters please get it to the person with the hand raised. Are we all sat, or are we still waiting? Did the person who had their hand up over here get one, or are we all sat? Now that all have a copy of the warrant, I will seek the motion waiving the reading of the warrant. Do I hear a motion? The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of waiving the reading of the motion of the warrant, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposed votes, I declare that it has been unanimously passed. Before I begin Article 1, there are some people this evening who are not citizens of Lakeville who may be asked to speak. Christopher Leppeck, the Highway Supervisor; John McCarthy, the Superintendent; Anne St. Pierre, Director of Special Education; and Laurie Hunter, Principal, may be asked to speak this evening, and they cannot speak unless you give them your permission. Do I hear anyone who objects to their speaking? Seeing none, I will declare that a unanimous agreement. Thank you. We will now move to Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to amend the Town budget approved under Article 2 of the Annual Town Meeting dated June 15, 2009 by making certain funding source adjustments as follows. Raise and appropriate the additional sum of $21,504. Transfer from free cash, total amount of $178,496. Transfer from Lakeville Enterprise, retained earnings, the amount of $135,000. Transfer from Park Enterprise, retained earnings, the total amount of $20,000.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would you like to speak to it before I ask for a financial recommendation?
Certainly. This is nothing more than a housekeeping article in that we did not have the free cash certified by the state at the time of our annual town meeting, and we used a figure of $200,000 to make up that difference with $21,504.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Between the speakers. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. It's a majority vote. All in favor of Article 1, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article 1, please raise your cards. Please wave, wave the card. Okay, I don't see any cards. I declare that it has passed. Article 1 is passed unanimously. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to transfer and/or appropriate from available funds certain sums of money in order to pre-anticipate costs for the fiscal year 2010 for various accounts in the general fund, all asset forth on the document entitled Article 2, Special Town Meeting Transfers, November 30th, 2009.
Yeah, close to the mic, please.
If everybody turns to...
Excuse me, before we turn to it, are you going to read the article? Continue.
I'm going to go over what the transfer, the transfers...
Thank you, go ahead. But I'll need a second when you're finished.
Okay. It's us, isn't it?
I don't know who it is.
All right. I'm usually pretty loud. As you know, our health insurance benefits, we, the Town used to pay 90 percent of the health insurance, and we recently changed to 75, 25. The Town pays 75, and the co-pay is...
Excuse me, Nancy, you're explaining it. All I want to know is, are you going to read the transfers themselves?
Okay. I'm just going to say where the money came from?
No.
No?
Just say it's coming from, it's going to.
Okay.
Then I got a second, then I got a Finance Committee thingy, and then you can explain it.
Okay. Employee health benefit insurance, $40,833. Fire raise freeze, $13,344, for a subtotal of $54,177. Debt service interest expense, $7,000. Old Colony tuition, $3,400. Employee benefits health insurance, $2,500. Employee benefits health insurance, $6,000. Other government general, which was put aside for unpaid bills for last year. Police expense, $15,000. Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, $150,000, for a total of $243,077. To be transferred or appropriated to: Town Clerk wages, $1,229. Treasurer's wages, $1,232. Selectmen's wages, $5,290. Accountant wages, $3,664. Assessors' wages, $4,059. Treasurer-collector wages, $5,246. Town Clerk wages, $2,537. Building Department wages, $3,007. Animal Control wages, $823. Highway Department wages, $10,478. Board of Health wages, $6,123. COA wages, $2,287. Veterans' wages, $54. Library wages, $8,228, for a subtotal of $54,177. Selectmen clerical wages, $7,000. Assessors' expenses, $3,400. Special Municipal Gearing Officer, $2,500. Town Clerk expenses for special elections, $6,000. Assistant Animal Control wages, $5,000. Police wages, $5,000. Selectmen's contracted services, $150,000, for a total of $243,77.
Thank you, is there a second? Who seconded? Thank you, there is a second. Nancy, would you like to explain it now, and then I'll go to the Finance Committee?
Okay. To start over, we had left extra money in health insurance benefits because the co-pay changed from 10 percent to 25 percent. So that's where the employee benefits, when you see on the transfer side, that's where that money comes from. For the fire wages, that money came from a wage freeze or a raise freeze. Going down further, the debt service, the money we had put aside for debt service interest expense on our $1.4 million bond came in $7,000 under. The Old Colony tuition, after it was certified after annual town meeting, was an extra $3,400. The police expense, that $15,000, because we don't have so many policemen or so many ships or cars on the road, that $15,000 is going to come out of their gas money and transfer over into wages. And the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, our water tower and pumping station and pipeline is going forward, and that's just money to pick up things that come along the way so that we're still eligible for the State Revolving Fund and the extra, the ARRA, the American Recovery Act money. We still, things pop up all the time. And as far as the wages on the top where it was appropriated to, they're not all exactly equal. It was $1.15 an hour week compensating the employees for, but when we went to annual town meeting, we hadn't done the wage freeze yet, so that's why you'll see some of these different amounts are what each department came up with after the wage freeze. And anybody has any more questions?
Right, we'll handle them as they come. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Seeing no one coming to the microphone, this requires a two-thirds vote. We'll see what we get. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see two opposed. I declare it passed by more than two-thirds. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to transfer $64,117 from employee benefits to health insurance to wages for the school department for the purpose of funding the collective bargaining agreement with the Educators Association of Great Town in Lakeville.
Thank you, is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, would you care to speak to it?
Certainly. This is as a result of the collective bargaining agreement that the towns have reached with the school committee. And the teachers, in addition to not having any raises this year, they also conceded and agreed not to book for wage increase, step raises, and only one-third of their, or two-thirds of their level increases were funded. So they funded most of their health insurance premium increase through that, and this is the balance to make up that difference.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Seeing no one coming to the microphone, I will move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Will you shut those things off? I see a few opposed, I declare it passed by majority vote. Before I move to Article 4, I would ask that anyone standing, please sit in a chair. I am going to ask the counters not to count anyone standing who wishes to vote. So if you want to vote, you gotta sit. Thank you for your cooperation, I appreciate it. Article 4.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the Town transfer from the Stabilization Fund the sum of $86,625 to establish a tuition-based elementary-level substantially separate classroom program for special education students at the Absolvent Elementary School, provided, however, that such funds shall not be expended until such time as the Regional School District funds a full-time special education teacher for the Absolvent Elementary School for the remainder of the 2009-2010 school year. And the Board of Selectmen and the local school committee enter into a memorandum of understanding concerning the administration and operation of the elementary-level substantially separate classrooms and, excuse me, and further that a revolving fund be created by the administration of such program with tuition payments, fees, and other receipts received in connection with operation of the program to be credited to such account, to be spent by the local school committee for the operation of the program in an amount not to exceed
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, would you care to speak to Article 4?
Yes. Ms. Moderator, this is a proposal that the, excuse me, the elementary school proposed, and this is to actually start a revolving fund for the special ed class and so they can actually move in and start a whole program for their B students, get a better education, and they actually have money to do this. And I believe Nancy also wanted to speak to this.
Before I go on to general discussion, I just, usually, the maker of the motion gives their point of view, then I go to the Finance Committee, and then we open it up. So Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Now seeing anyone on the microphone, we'll go to Nancy.
Okay, I was very much in favor of this program. This is the way of the future, this is what they do in a lot of other towns. When this program is set up, it will not only bring, keep our students in district and bring other students back into district, but there will be allowances for seats for children from other communities that would pay to wishing to come to our program, so it doesn't put the whole burden on the taxpayer. There would be some revenue coming in. I'm sure you know that we're trying to do that across the board, for example, with the water. That anything that can generate revenue in this economy is a really good thing, and this classroom hopefully will generate some revenue. I don't think it will be self-supporting, but that's what you would work toward in the future, that you would at least have some money coming in to help support that it wouldn't be on the back of the taxpayers.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak to this article?
I just wanted to know, oh Sharon Angler, where these students are going to be found space for in the school? Since it's my understanding the school is overcrowded.
Go ahead. I think Laurie Hunter will...
Yeah, I'd rather go to the floor before I come back up here. Yes, Mr. McQueeney?
I'm here, the Chair there. Electoral School Committee, I think Mrs. Hunter would be the best person to answer that question.
Same difference.
Thank you. Because we have 32, 30 children in a classroom, I actually have available space because while the building overall is overcrowded, they're all in fewer classroom spaces, so space is available for this program.
So it's filled, but some rooms are empty. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. This is going to require a two-thirds, and I'm going to ask right off the bat that the counters count because I suspect we're going to need to do that anyway. So counters, are you ready? Okay. All in favor of Article 4, please raise your cards.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yes.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. Joe, you counted on top?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. Thank you. Two, thank you. The vote is 157 to three. I declare it passed by the necessary two-thirds. Article 5.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to authorize leasing for a term of five years, one new front-end load-up for the use of the Highway Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, would you care to speak to it?
Yes, I will. This, the funding for this will come from Chapter 90 money, which is awarded to the Town each year to provide maintenance on the streets, and because this machine will be used for that type of a purpose through the Highway Department, we can use those monies. It's approximately just over $28,000 a year for the five-year period, including interest, and at the end of the five years, we own the machine, I believe, for a dollar. The reason we have this money available, and Chapter 90 money now, is, as you may all remember, we've had a gasoline leak that's been being in a cleanup process for a number of years at the Highway Barn. That work is very near done. I think at the, recently, we might have appropriated approximately $20,000 to finish that work, and then we'll be finished with it, so this money is now available to us.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Does anyone care to wish? Care to wish? Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we will move to a vote. It requires a majority. All in favor of Article 5, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article 5, please raise your cards. I see no opposition, I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to establish a water supply and water distribution system under the authority of Section 39A of Chapter 40 of the General Laws and vote pursuant to Section 69A of Chapter 41 of the General Laws to authorize the Board of Selectmen to act as a Board of Water Commissioners.
Thank you, do I hear a second? I hear a second, would you care to speak to it?
Yes, as we go forward with being in control of our own water in the future, there are things that are going to come up. Hopefully, in the future, we would be able to use our own town well site, which pumps, the last time it was checked, a half a million gallons a day, and in order for us to do that, in order for us to go forward, we can't do anything. At the annual town meeting, we voted to charge betterments and user fees, but we cannot go forward with that in any way unless we have water commissioners, and at this point, it will be the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone care to, Mr. Marshall?
Yes, Bob Marshall from Barstow Street. I have a number of questions. Some you've answered tonight, but as you know, Nancy, when I wrote to you back a while ago, and Chuck and Derek, it is my belief that when we voted for this back at the annual town meeting, at least I didn't hear anything said about the cost being borne only by those people who are on Taunton Water, and that is a serious concern of mine. I, the question, I guess, one of the questions I have is, Mr. Moderator, through you to whoever can answer this, who benefits from us passing this?
Nancy, do you want to speak to it?
I believe the entire town benefits. I think we were very clear at the annual town meeting that to be in control of our own water after over 100 years of having Taunton control of our water is an asset to the community, and it will be revenue generating in the future, and as with all new things, when they first start up, some of those fees, yes, will go back to the people who use the water, but as time goes on and we become in control of our own water using our own town wells, that should equalize off, and hopefully, everybody will be in a better position than they were with paying all that money out to Taunton.
Again, Ms. Moderator, through you. I agree, I think the entire town does benefit, and that's just my point. If the entire town benefits, as we do when we pay for fire, and police, and library, and senior center, and schools, and so forth, none of us uses all of them. Some of us use them sporadically, some of us don't have kids at school, but we still pay because it is the right thing to do. And my point is that if the entire town benefits, then I think the entire town ought to pay, and not just, you, in our conversation, when you called me after I wrote the letter, you indicated that what, one of the things motivating all of this was a lack of water pressure. Speaking only for myself, and I believe the people on my street at least, water pressure is not an issue. You mentioned that Taunton may be building other things, and that may impact the pressure and so forth, but the entire town benefits from this, and I believe the entire town ought to pay at least something. Excuse me, could I just ask a question to maybe get to a better answer? When you say "to pay," what do you mean about "pay"? Do you mean to put in pipes? Do you mean to pay for the water they get every month? What do you mean to pay? Nancy told me in that phone conversation that the people would be paying, the people on the, who have Taunton water now, and I'm one of those people, because three days after I moved into my house, we had no water. She told, told me that we would be paying an additional amount to Lakeville in addition to what we pay to Taunton. That's what I'm talking about. In terms of the piping...
That's okay, I just wanted to know...
One more thing, though, in answer to your question. We pay, in terms of betterments, we on that street paid to bring that pipe down already, and Nancy indicated to me that we would not need to pay betterments in that particular case, and that's good, I can understand that. But my point still remains... But my point still remains, the entire town is benefiting from this, as we do with other things, and I believe that the entire town should pay something. And not all of this cost should be borne by the people on Taunton Water.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Do you care to respond to that?
Yeah, well, there's a couple of things to address. One is the pressure. I think because you go and turn on the faucet, you think you have adequate pressure. There is not adequate pressure in the system for fire suppression. If two houses in Lakeville happen to be on fire at the same time, and the fire truck gets to the other house first, your house could burn down because there's not adequate pressure under a situation like that for an emergency. So on a day-to-day basis, you might have plenty of pressure, but it's almost like a false sense of security because there is not pressure if there were to be an emergency or if the school was on fire, or, and somebody's house was on fire at the same time. Also, we are expending quite a bit of money. We got the money for the lawsuit, and we're putting all that money into, that's people, Lakeville's money that actually came in, and we're putting that into building this system so that we can go forward to having our own water system in the future. And that money that you're paying out now will not go to Taunton, it will come to Lakeville. And if in between, we have to do some user fees to accommodate setting up a water department and some of the things that we have to pay for, then that is how it would be. But afterwards, when we are using our own water, or even when we master meter, we should be able to master meter in a couple of years and buy water wholesale, so that fee that the users are paying would probably substantially go back to where it was. I mean, this is a whole new thing for Lakeville, so I can't make promises. I'm trying not to make promises. We're trying to set it out to be successful. And this is the way that we've been. We've talked to Taunton, we've talked to Town Council, we already passed the user fees and the betterments at annual town meeting. And we're trying to make this successful so it can be revenue generating in the future. Not to milk the people that are on it, but to get the money that you're giving to Taunton right now back to Lakeville.
Mr. Moderator? Yes?
Through you, to Nancy, are you saying that, let's say I pay fifty dollars per quarter for water to Taunton, are you saying that part of that would go to Lakeville, or it's an additional part beyond the fifty?
Sure. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, yeah, right now you're paying a retail rate to the city of Taunton, and when this all comes down and we get, we have the IME with Taunton, well, our plan is to buy from Taunton the water at a wholesale rate, and then resell it to Lakeville at a retail rate that we set as a town. So that, so we don't know exactly what the numbers are. It could be less, it could be the same, chances are it won't be more, but that's where we're heading with this, so we'll master meter, we'll buy the water wholesale, and then sell it to our residents.
Okay, you may have, Mr. Moderator, you may have answered my question, but I need to be certain. If I'm paying X amount to Taunton, when we, if we adopt all of this, will I be paying X to Taunton and Y to Lakeville, or a total of X to Lakeville?
Mr. Moderator?
Well...
It's, it's easy.
Okay.
It's easy that way.
If we get to Z, we're in trouble. Go ahead.
Um, the, well, first of all, there will be a hearing. There will be a hearing, and there will be public input before any fees are set.
Could you answer his quick question before you elaborate?
The bills will come to town hall in Lakeville. We will regenerate a bill that will add a little bit on, and then we'll all go out. You'll get one bill, it will be from the town of Lakeville. That's what we're working on.
Will it add up to X, or X plus Y?
It will add up to X plus Y.
That's what I thought. And that's what I object to, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Sharon, I'm wondering why the Selectmen and not the Board of Health sees to me water should come under the Board of Health.
Anyone want to answer that one? Yes, Mr. McQueenie?
Yeah, and Town Council's right here, but I believe under Master and Laws, it has to be the Board of Selectmen unless we go to town meeting and actually do a water board down the road, which I hope we do.
Chapter forty-one, sixty-nine A. Mr. LaCameron?
Rich LaCameron, thirty-two oh five, Rose. That's my exact question. The Board of Selectmen have been dealing with this water issue all along as a board, and I don't think there's been enough input from the community about this whole project having to do with setting up water commissions, the water tower, the rates, and so forth. I think there's a lot of commu, there's a lot of confusion in the community, and my good friend Bob Marshall, who has pointed out as a payer, is confused as well. I object to the Board of Selectmen being the water commissioner. I think they ought to be an independent board, water board, or appointed water commissioners separate from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I have no axe to grind...
Could you just give us your name?
Bill Marks in Belzberg Road. Excuse me, I have no axe to grind here, but I'd like to say that I happened to be in town hall on other business when the planning board was conferring with some members of the board, and all of this appears to have been done in an above-board manner, and nothing, you know, and the hearings have been open, and people could have attended, and there's no reason why anybody should think that this is being done in any kind of covert manner.
Yes, sir.
William Adams, one Daniel Road. I just think things are moving a little forward here, too quickly. They've already had surveyors out, they're not mapping out where the new pipes are gonna go, who is gonna be charged betterments, who is gonna be charged fees. And the Board of Selectmen are going to be, want to be water commissioners, and they're not gonna be subject to any of these fees because the water's not going down any of the streets that they live on. So I really think the water commission should be separate, and it should have people who are going to be directly impacted by their decisions as part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
All the decisions going forward and past will be open for public hearings. A lot of the decisions we already made, we made at the annual town meeting. And now to be able to go forward that, there's a few other things that we have to do. I don't, I'm sure that the hearings will be attended, they will be well-publicized. We also have the recovery money that we are online on a schedule. A water tower's gonna cost four-point-eight million dollars, and we're getting a huge forgiveness on the interest on that loan. And we've said it before, and I've said it before, that we have to continue to move forward if we want to get that money for this to happen, and to be in control of our water in the future. And exactly how we get there is very difficult, but every single step, as already has been, will be done before the public, in the newspaper, and there will be hearings every step of the way. And for now, to expedite the situation, we have from-town council under the law, the Board of Selectmen will start as being water commissioners, but as we go forward, we're not gonna be able to handle that responsibility, there will have to be a water board. We're doing what we have to do right now to get this done. And in the future, we will have a water board. I don't know if it's elected. It will be elected. You can run for it. But right now, we're just trying to get things in motion. And the way to do it, through the law, is for the Board of Selectmen temporarily to be water commissioners.
Thank you. Before you speak, Mr. Marshall?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, a couple of things. Earlier, Nancy, you mentioned in terms of the pressure, you know, if the school's on fire and so forth. Schools are not hooked up to any water from Taunton that I know of.
That's a Wampsett school.
That's a Wampsett school, pardon me, all right. You mentioned something about a lawsuit, and this money would be used to help with that, but what is that lawsuit?
The lawsuit that the Water Stabilization Fund came from, there were MBTEs in the water at the town office building, and we received a lump sum of money, which has gotten us as far as we've gotten.
That's really not to list this at all.
You mentioned, somebody mentioned about, you know, everything's been done above-board and not covert. I never meant to imply that anything was. I've been sick for the last year and a half, so I haven't attended perhaps some of those meetings that I otherwise would have, but I do remember a town meeting. I listened very, very closely, and I don't remember anything being said about the cost of this being borne only by those people who receive that water. I don't remember that, and I listened carefully. Thank you.
Mr. Evers? Mr. Moderator, just point of issue. I own a business in town, it's on Kenneth Wells Drive. I am a Selectman. I do pay a Taunton water bill. And I notice, when I have two flushing toilets going at the same time, there's a significant decrease in water pressure in my business.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Rodney Dixon, thirty-nine Big Lane. Just real quick, you mentioned temporary for the Board of Selectmen. What's the precedent in Massachusetts for time? Six months, a year, two years, before we can get the process started to get elected to these, to the water board?
In other words, how fast are you, the Board of Selectmen, going to be in trying to get an elected board?
Mr. Moderator? Obviously, we haven't voted on it, but what I'd like to see is at the next annual town meeting, put that on the agenda.
Thank you. Seeing no one else before a microphone, we'll move this to a vote. It requires a majority vote. I think we're gonna count. So the counters, please get ready, so we don't do this twice. All in favor of Article Six, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-three is Mrs. Hunt. Thirty-four? Sixty-two from Mr. Chamberlain. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to Article Six, please raise your cards. Counters, please count. Thank you.
Eight.
Thank you.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, Mr. Chamberlain. The vote was one hundred and twenty-nine in favor, thirty-three opposed. It only required a majority vote. It passes by a majority vote. Article Seven.
Mr. Chairman, I moved at the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half, for the purpose of establishing a Water Facility Enterprise Fund effective fiscal year two thousand and ten for the revenues and payment of costs associated with water infrastructure improvements, to be known as the Water Enterprise Fund, and further to transfer a sum of six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the Water Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund to the Water Enterprise Fund created year under, and to appropriate the Water Enterprise Fund budget for two thousand and ten as set forth in Article Number Seven, FY-ten Water Enterprise Fund Budget, November thirtieth, two thousand and nine.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to speak to it?
No.
All right. Before you do, can I just say something? Article Seven does three things. It establishes a Water Facility Enterprise Fund, it transfers the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to a Water Infrastructure Improvement Stabilization Fund, and it creates its budget. Three things, one article. Now, would you care to speak?
Okay, this, and the next article, too, all have to do with what we just talked about, is setting up the process for us to get ready to be our own water department.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone care to speak? Mr. McQueenie?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Dave McQueen, Dunbar Road. First, I want to say that I'm in favor of Lakeville controlling its water resources. It hasn't been mentioned so far, but I remember the discussions about national development and the problem negotiating water rights with Milburn. We have to be in control of our own water resources for our infrastructure growth. So I am certainly in favor of this project, which has been so aidfully advanced by Sleco and Yates. I have two questions, though. We, we are in difficult financial times, and many of our neighboring towns have spent time talking about regionalization. Wow, it seems like water could be regionalized, too. I'm looking at the Article Seven, FY-ten Water Enterprise Fund budget, and, and, not talking about the capital improvement project, the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, the other, two-hundred-thousand dollars we're spending to set up what essentially is duplicative of what Taunton is already doing. And my question is, was there any discussion with Taunton about, you know, some sort of agreement where they continue to do our billing for us? We hire them to do our billing, we don't have to spend this money, and we have, we have, we still control our own resources. It seems to me that this is duplicative, and I have another question, if I can get an answer to that.
Well, let's do it one at a time. Yes?
Taunton cannot, we have talked to Taunton. We talk to Taunton like every day, all the time, because we're working on intermunicipal agreement as we speak. Taunton cannot, doesn't have the means to collect the money and give it back to Lakeville, absolutely not. What we have talked to them about was maybe sending all the bills, when we set up our water department, all the Taunton bills will come to Lakeville, we will pay the bill out of this enterprise fund, and then we will bill separately Lakeville customers. So we will already be on the road to controlling our own water. And I know it moves fast, but we have to, this might not even happen in fiscal ten, we're setting it up in case it does. We want to be prepared for that. It might not happen till fiscal eleven, and this will just churn over to fiscal eleven. But we want to be in a situation where we'll be prepared if it were to happen this year, in this fiscal year.
Does that answer your first question?
Not, not quite. Partially, I guess I want to be reassuring.
What part?
That that was, that it was discussed with Taunton for them to be able to do it, and Sleco and Yates, Sleco and Yates said that they can't do it, so I'll be satisfied with that. The second part of my question is, four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar capital improvement projects, I'm just guessing, or I'm assuming, that that's laying pipe, capital improvements. My question is, if there are capital improvements, you know, traditionally, we, capital improvements, we borrow the money for over a long period of time. If it's pipes in the ground, then it's gonna last a hundred years. We should borrow that money. That's the thought in my mind, and I, and I feel that not only as a citizen, but as the chairman, chairman of the school committee, that four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars would go a long way towards alleviating thirty-two kids in a classroom in Asa Wampsett, which prompts my question.
Be a one-year. That would be, Mr. Moderator, through you, that would be a one-year solution, and we're really trying hard not to do that. We still don't know, I mean, we haven't even broken ground on the water tower yet. We still need to be assured that, number one, it is a loan. We are borrowing the money, we have to pay it back. So we have to be assured that it's secured, and that we do have some money to pay it back. And also, once we own our own system, we have to put a little aside each year because it will be ours. We will stay regional with Taunton, and they will probably still do maintenance and operation. We have to figure out about meters and things. There's a lot of things to figure out, but we, when we master meter, we have to buy the master meter. So...
My question is why?
And also, just let me finish, please, David. I still don't know how much more we're gonna need for the water tower. We don't know, as things are built, if you've ever built a house, you know, you start building the house, it's gonna cost you twenty thousand dollars, and you run into a rock, and you have to do something all over again, and it's gonna cost you, I usually use remodeling your kitchen. They tell you it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars by the time you've done it. It never cost you ten thousand dollars. So we have to be assured that we have enough to finish this project. We do not want another unfinished project.
Before you reply, and we're getting to a thing here, his question was...
Yes.
If you're not going to spend it to two thousand and eleven, why do you need the capital improvements now? That was his question.
Well, not quite, Mr. Moderator, if I may, if I might interject here.
All right. Then please clarify it for me, because...
If it's a capital... If it's a capital improvement, why don't we borrow the money?
We are borrowing the money.
$450,000, it says here, capital improvement project.
We don't have any way of paying for it yet.
So these are capital improvement?
We have to set the budget up. When we set the enterprise fund up to go forward with this whole project, you have to have a budget. And this is the budget that we came up with. Yep.
Mr. Moderator?
David, maybe I clarify the answer you're looking for. We have applied for the loan, and we haven't been 100% approved yet. We hope it's going to come. Actually, some other towns are dropping off the list, so we're in a better position every day. But we need to move forward. We don't have that money yet to move forward, so we're using the settlement money that we have to move forward. Then, when that loan comes back in, we can then balance the sheet. But we just can't stop and wait for the money. We have to get a lot of engineering and a lot of the pipe work started.
I guess that's the answer to my question. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Paul McGillis, Daniel Road. Like the gentleman just said about the financial situation that everybody's dealing with. You know, to push this through now, you talk about a $4.8 million cost for this project. Is there any kind of a projected timeframe for the town to recoup that $4.8 million?
Nancy, or Mr. Maxi?
The SRF loan that we're getting to do this project is.
What is SRF?
A state revolving fund loan.
Thank you.
It's a 2% loan, and with the American Recovery Act money, some of the, they'll be forgiven us on the interest. As Derek said, even as we go along, as projects drop off, they don't take on new projects. They give the money to the projects that are going forward and doing a good job, and we're still in that situation right now. It's a 20-year loan.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Anyone sitting down with a question being asked? Anyone care to ask any more questions? Seeing this is going to require two-thirds vote, and I'm asking counters to please All in favor of Article Seven, please raise your yellow cards.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Fifty-five. Thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to Article Seven, please raise your cards.
Eight.
Nine.
The vote was 114 in favor, 25 opposed. It takes 90 votes to pass under two-thirds. It got 114. It therefore passes by the necessary two-thirds. Article Seven passes. Article Eight.
Article Eight. I moved at the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section forty-two A, Sections forty-two A through forty-two F inclusive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before we go anywhere else, would you please explain the chapter and verse?
This is just like, almost like another housekeeping article that goes back to the two we just passed. It's under the law, method of collections, and how we collect the money for the water.
Okay. Just as a quick summary for people here, forty-two A through forty-two F concern the method of collection, the effective date of the lien, the unpaid charges, the collection as part of property tax, abatements and appeals, and the recovery of delinquent charges from tenants. That's what's meant by the chapter and verse. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote that requires a majority. All in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. You may put them down. I declare that it has passed by majority vote. Article Nine.
Article Nine reads, "To see if the towns will vote to amend the official zoning map by rezoning from residential to business land on Main Street as described as follows: 237 Main Street, 239 Main Street, formerly the Maguire property, now the Assessor's Office, and 241 Main Street, formerly Lakeville Public Library, now the something-through and cafe and bookstore, or take any action relative thereto."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mrs. Donnelly, the maker of the motion, has the first shot at speaking.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Darlene Donnelly, and I've been a devoted resident of Lakeville for 25 years, having raised my children here, and now looking forward to helping to raise my grandchildren here as well. I served for 12 years on the Lakeville School Committee, on numerous of the town committees, and as a supporter of many community events and fundraises for people in need. Excuse me. I have employed many town students, mentoring and teaching them about how to work in business as well. I purchased 237 Main Street almost three years ago after its floor closure, with the intention of living upstairs and operating the flower shop downstairs. The property had been neglected, and since purchased, has been improved and beautified while maintaining its historic integrity, which reflects Lakeville's historic rural appeal. Small business benefits more than one person. It benefits the whole community. I am asking for a zoning change to help curate a town square in an area that already houses many small businesses and town offices. My vision is to have my flower shop serve as a flagship of the kinds of business which add to a town square atmosphere similar to those in Marietta and Rochester. As 237 Main Street is a through-and-through lot, my deliveries are received out of the back of the shop off of Route 18, so taking care not to interfere with school traffic. I would like to address the Jiffy Lube comment made in last week's Middlebar Gazette. There has been some concern about what types of business would be at 237 Main Street in the far future. According to Lakeville Town Bylaws, most businesses are required to apply and then be granted a special town permit. The town's disapproval would negate the possibility of any unattractive business in downtown Lakeville. I would appreciate your support with this zoning change, which would permit me to run my flower shop in an attractive setting pleasing to both of my neighbors and all those that respect and love our town's rural appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee, even though this is not a money article, the Finance Committee did take a vote on this, and it was unanimous vote. We consider this area of town to be a historic and very sensitive part that makes up the charming aspect of Lakeville. And we consider this article to go against, to be outside of the master plan, so we did not vote to recommend this article.
Thank you. Before I go to the next speaker, for those people wondering where the property is, I believe there's a locus in the warrant, so you can take a look at the library on the corner, the old former library on the corner, the Assessor's Office next door, and then the third property to your right would be the one that we are talking about. Pardon? Before you continue, I have to get the Planning Board recommendation and their vote. Sorry.
I thought you forgot us, Mr. Moderator. On November 17th, the Planning Board held a hearing regarding the petition. We closed the hearing that night. We re-met this evening at 6:30 to discuss the issue and take a vote. Four of us showed up, four of us voted unanimously to disapprove of the article. We feel wholeheartedly that there are some serious issues here. The largest issue is that over the years, we have tried to work our zoning cooperatively with adjacent businesses and the development of water within our district. We've looked at those businesses, which we feel are most problematic, and have tried to zone protectively against them, even though we can't deny particular uses being brought into the community. Some of those issues are drive-through units like fast food restaurants. Other issues are gas stations. What we tried to do is establish areas within the community where those zoning businesses or tight businesses could only be located in areas adjacent to public water or within certain distances. Because water does go to the school, this area is a prime developmental area for a place like McDonald's if they no longer decided they wanted to stay at Solis's, especially where the property has frontage on both Route 18 and 105. I find it extremely problematic to rezone this parcel of land, particularly even though we have no objection to the businesses there currently. As most people who are here now, were also here in the spring, realize we tried to rezone it for a much smaller or a different grade of business zone, which would have allowed the continued operation. But as a general business property, to rezone this would be, in our opinion, a huge mistake.
And that's four out of five people who are on the board, correct?
The fifth person just.
I understand that. I'm trying to give the idea that there are four out of five, not four out of 12. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Will you please state your name?
Hi, Amy Dow, One Nelson's Grove Road. I live behind where most people know is the old Courtyard Garden Center, which started as a flower stand by the Norris family a few decades ago. And since I've been there, there have been four owners, and it's residentially zoned, but it's been grandfathered used for agricultural purposes only. There have been many, many issues, which I won't get into. But I just want to state that with those four owners, all running agricultural businesses, they've sold lobsters, they've sold propane, like a large propane tank like they have at the hardware store. Sheds was almost introduced recently. So there's been a lot of battles over what started as a very small flower stand, and it was put in an area that it never should have been put in. It's a private road that it goes down. It's almost like a one-lane road, and there have been tractor-trailer trucks down there, so it wasn't designed for business use. And I feel the same way about this area that we're talking about. I like the businesses that are there, and I feel like she started her business knowing that it was a residential use. And I don't think it's fair that, you know, we always have to come up and say, you know, this isn't right. Because I've been doing that constantly with the place that I'm next to, and the onus is always put on the neighbors. And as a neighbor of a property that sort of, you know, developed into something that it should never have been, you know, I just wanted to stand up and say that it hasn't been fun living next to what I've lived to, and I really hope that this stays residential and you can have somewhat more control over it than, you know, you would have got a business on. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You were next.
Thank you. My name is Frank Sterrett, Sixth Crest Drive, and recently retired professor from the School of Business, Bridgewater State College, Professor of Strategy and Operations. One of the things that we study is business models, and one of the most effective business models that's come to the forefront in towns and cities and urban growth is a thing called the mixed model. And the mixed model works very, very well, which is businesses and housing sometimes, you know, put together, as long as the Board is smart enough not to let the wrong businesses get in there. I don't think a, you know, a Jiffy Lube is right for Lakeville across from the elementary schoolhouse, you know? But, you know, I drew and buy this little house. I think it's certainly not an eyesore. It's far from it. You can barely read the sign. It's an innocuous, small business, and I think it's the kind of thing that small towns need, little local things. And as Mrs. Donnelly said, she's been around for a while, is well-known, in fact, served on the school committee, I believe, at one time possibly. And, you know, I'm looking at this little business, and it's right next door to, what is it, the Assessor's Office, right? Which is no visual prize in its own right, and next to that is the old, oh, sorry. Is the old library, which is now a very nice little coffee shop and reading place. And, you know, I think with the proper safeguards in place against a Jiffy Lube, a strip club, and the liquor store, I see no reason why this can enhance the little town of Lakeville. This is the kind of little business that we need. I am all in favor of mixed uses. Does it need control from you people? Absolutely, positively. But, Mrs. Chris, it's not a harmful thing. The volume is not there. She doesn't interfere with the school buses and the school traffic. You know, it's a little Lakeville business. It's what Lakeville is about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Angie Rikati. We refrain from doing that, because it's going to, we're going to get into boos, and then we're going to get floor clapping, and then we're going to get blood on the floor, and I don't want to go that way. So let's just have people say what they want to say, and then we'll go from there, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out what the main purpose was on the petition. It was to make it a business zone from the Lakeville Library, the old library, and the Assessor's Office. I understand from previous meetings that those two parcels are not, should not even be there, because those are town property. So her petition should strictly be her own one house. And I understand that that would be called spot zoning. So the thing is, there's no reason, I know anybody that's in favor her, I agree with that wholeheartedly, even with her neighbors, that somehow she should keep doing what she's doing, but definitely can't be a business zone. And as I understand, there are issues with traffic already in that area between school buses, and her next-door neighbor has problems with, people will park either in her driveway or next-door, people will go across the street. So there are issues already there, and it would be worse if it was a business zone. And it would only apply to her property, because the other two are owned by the town.
Before you sit down, what is your name, sir?
Angie Rikati.
Thank you.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd just like to comment on, actually, any petition that could petition the town to rezone town property. Town Council has conferred with that, because we did look into that, and Mrs. Donnelly has the right to do that, and it's this body that decides it.
Thank you. Your.
Mr. Moderator.
Somebody pick up the coin.
Mr. Moderator, I just would like to caution the members in the auditorium this evening that we're not trying to do anything against Darlene Donnelly. I personally like Darlene very much. I've used her business myself for many, many years. But I think if you also all remember years ago, the town was petitioned to rezone the property that Sedell's now sits on. It was going to be a hardware store, a nice hardware store for a gentleman who's been in town for many, many years. We never saw a hardware store there. There are now two large businesses there. They happen to be okay businesses, but that wasn't the intent. We can't rezone property for individuals or for personalities. We have to expect the business zone to be an allowed use for anything that's permitted within the current zoning bylaw. If restrictions were in place now, then it would be appropriate to rezone it for her and for her use. It may be an appropriate use for that area. But if something happens to Darlene, or if someone else wants to come in and offer her a million dollars for that property, I wouldn't blame her at all for turning around and selling it. We have to ask ourselves, what type of use can we allow in that property unrestricted? Because that's pretty much what we have right now. I would just caution you to take a look at the area, look at where it is in town, and look at what other uses could be there besides Darlene's nice little flower shop.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Take your name, please.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Don Foster from Tickham Lane. A number of people will recognize me from the zoning board. I am not speaking to the zoning board. I'm speaking for myself. And at this point, I'm reiterating what has been said, so I'll be brief. Let's be clear. This is not about a flower shop. This is about rezoning three pieces of property, two of which are exempt from zoning, so it's really about rezoning one piece of property. really about rezoning one piece of property. To me, that's spot zoning. The flower shop is an attractive business, we've agreed to it, the zoning board granted a home occupation permit, it's well-managed, it looks great, it's well-run. This is not about the flower shop. This is about rezoning a small corner of Lakeville, three pieces of property. And I hope my colleagues on the, my former zoning board colleagues on the board would agree with me on the spot zoning issue. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Seamus is next, and then the lady over here, and then back to Mr. Marshall.
Joe Seamus, Lakeview Heights. I've been a resident of this town close to 60 years and heard the lament, year after year, we've got to attract business in Lakeville. We have to attract responsible business people and a clean business. Well, we have that in that section. We have bookstore, and we have Darlene, and we have the assessors' office. It is not unattractive, it is not an intrusive kind of business that hampers traffic or any of that sort. And so, if you want to attract business, you've got to be attractive to business. And I think when you do these kinds of things and not consider what is there, you probably are saying to other people, don't come in here because, boy, we may not rezone. And I think that you have to take that into consideration. And this idea of what could happen, well, anything can happen in the future to any area of this town, and to project beyond what is reality, I think, is not real. Thank you.
Please, please. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Cynthia Biswell, 235 Main Street. I'm actually the direct abiding neighbor to the flower shop at 237 Main Street. And I am going to reiterate again on some comments that I made at the planning board meeting on the 18th. I have lived in town since 2002, and Darlene Donnelly and Heritage Flowers was located over at Gammons, I believe, Gammons Insurance Company when I first moved here. Always thought she's operated a very lovely place. Unfortunately, what we run into is Darlene has moved into a home where she gave her statement and committed to operating a catering business, which has been stated on town documentation, and she was going to run only a phone service and have things delivered. The town offered her a home occupation permit based on those guidelines. Mrs. Donnelly then turned around and expanded on that with a permit to build an expansion what was, I guess, stated as a family room, and you could correct me if I'm wrong. This family room is now the retail space of her home. It has just gone one little step, got away, another little step got away, a little bit more was given, and it's blown up into what it is now. Now, I'm not saying that Darlene is not a respected community member, she is not an unsuccessful businesswoman, she's a respected businesswoman in this town. I am stating that the way it has gone about and the way that this has taken place is not right. We have many business people in this town, and, Mr. Evans, you stated you've got a business, but you did not go about it getting it a business by upheaving your neighbors, as well as I don't think a lot of successful business owners have done, okay? It was residential when she moved in, and it should stay residential. That was her commitment when she moved in there to stay a catering business. I understand that that's changed, but I don't think there's a necessity to upheave the neighborhood and the possibility of what could come. Now, I do, the gentleman stated earlier that business models and mixed models are a good idea. I think that is a good idea when they're given variances, when they're given a home occupation permit, as the town gave her to begin with. But when you allow that zone to go business area, to go business zone, I think the townspeople need to understand it is opening a whole can of worms for the possibilities of what could happen. And I think most of you can respect me being her neighbor and being concerned for my family and what could possibly go there if the town loses control of what goes there. There's all good intentions, but the bottom line, if someone keeps fighting it and pushing it and pushing it, as it's happened now, this is the third time we are here about this same thing. She did this years ago on Route 18, and the town shot it down. She tried to open a business zone on the opposite side this year as of now, and the town shot it down. I don't know how many of you have been around, it was before I was here, but it was brought to my attention then. It's time really to put a rest to this, and I can appreciate her friends and her acquaintances that are here to vote for her as their loyalty and defense, but I'm asking you to vote as the loyalty of your town and what is right, and what is correct about the way this should have been done.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. With all deference to my good friend, Don Foster, who said that this is not about a flower shop, I take some issue with that. I think it may well be about a flower shop. I believe that there are some things that have been going on, just my belief, based on what I read in the newspaper, et cetera, and what little I know about some of the issues going on behind the scenes, that this may be indeed about a flower shop. Now, Jim Merrick mentioned just a moment ago that people are not out against Darlene, and I think all of us pretty much feel the same way. She's a heck of a woman, done a lot for the town, et cetera, and I don't think we should vote for this for that reason. However, something has got to be done. I think Jim was right when he said the best way to deal with this would have been, I forget what you call it, the neighborhood business zone? Is that what you call it? Okay, I agree, but it failed. It's my understanding that, you know, we could have put restrictions on it, et cetera, et cetera. Let's put restrictions on it. Let's get the thing fixed.
But that's not what's before us today.
I understand that. This is a way to get it fixed, but it doesn't solve some of the other problems that come along with it. But something has been at work here. It is my belief, something has been at work here against this getting resolved, and I take strong issue with that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jim Hilli, I don't believe in spot zoning. And I don't believe in spot zoning, and I look across the street from my house, and I saw three greenhouses dilapidated and unusable, and I just don't believe in that. Is it spot zoning?
Thank you.
Is it key?
Thank you, Mr. Hilli. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Carol Foster from Tinkham Lane. A question I have for Mrs. Donnelly, she has a home occupation currently, is that correct? Zone for, she has a...
Would one of the selectmen answer that question? Because I don't know.
She has a home occupation.
Yes, Ms. Moderator, she does.
Okay. If she gets a business zone, what changes will, if any, does she want to make from home occupation to business? I mean, she's done this for a reason, there must be something she would like to do, or continue to do, or what?
Mrs. Donnelly?
Well, I'd like to post some hours so people, the public could come in. I get phone calls all the time from people asking, can I come in? I do make appointments, that was part of the catering type of business. I do have families that call and want to come in and talk about funerals. Most of the, a lot of the time, they'll call ahead of time, but sometimes they don't, sometimes they walk in. I'd like to maybe put a spotlight on my sign in the evening, so brides can find me when I have evening appointments. It's really not going to change anything on the outside of the building or the inside by any means. It's just, I'd like to be a retail shop, I'm a home, considered a home occupation business, I'd like to post some hours, put an open flag out.
So, you'd like the signage different?
I mean, no, I'm happy with the sign. I'd like to put, maybe put a spotlight on it, or if I wanted to put a Christmas tree on it, not have to take it down because it looks like I've let the sign.
Would the signage be different in a business as opposed to a home occupation?
It could be, it's a two-by-two right now, it could be a little bit bigger. I don't have a problem with the size of my sign, I'd just like to light it if I could.
But you, but if you do have a business...
Excuse me, I'm not going to get into a back-and-forth here.
Okay.
You had a question, and I think she's answered it, and now you're picking it apart...
Oh, okay.
And you're going on to a lot of detail.
Okay.
She says she's got a small sign, she says she might want to alter it.
I guess what I'm trying to ask is the difference between signage for a business as opposed to a home occupation?
Ms. Selectman? What's the difference between a business sign, if she so wishes?
Once she's, if she is zoned tonight, business, would there be a signage difference that could be possible in a business?
Ms. Moderator, she stated she has a two-by-two, but a business sign could be up to 32 square feet, which is basically a sheer fly with four by eight.
So, so it could happen at that, once it's zoned business?
Yes.
Up to the business?
That's up to what it would be, not necessarily what she decides she wants to do.
But she could.
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to address a couple of the comments that were made, I was coming up here before that question. May I go?
Yes.
Okay. The first thing is, when I bought the building, when I bought the house, I went to the building inspector and I got a building permit, and I put an addition on it, and I put the addition in the back, and it made it, it has lots of windows, it's a beautiful, great room, we called it when we went to apply for a permit, because it is a great room. I had to do that because you can't ask for any kind of business occupation permit without, you can't alter the building after you ask for it. So, I had to alter the building first, hence the reason why the addition went on. I think it's just made the building better, it's a beautiful piece of property, and I think I've maintained it, and I think I've done a real good job at it. So, as far as Mrs. Biswell's concerned, you know, she was saying that I, you know, I forget the word she used, but I did it right, and by the letter of the law.
Seeing no one at the microphone, just one thing, is it new? I want a new idea because I'm not going to get into I'm for it, I'm against it, and have people lining up, okay? So, if you have an unusual, different question, I'd be very willing to entertain it.
James Droukati? I just want to mention that there is another flower shop in Lakeville you can walk to, you know, from which you, so...
That's neither here nor there. Mr. Piazzecki, is it different?
Ah, yes. Mr. Piazzecki, 222 Old Main Street, I am in the area. I just want to make my voice known that I'm very much in favor of Darlene and the business she has. What has happened, but I don't like it going the way it's going right now. What has happened to this neighborhood business? Is that the neighborhood business zone?
It was defeated at the annual town meeting, so she has applied for a business zone only at this town meeting.
All right, my problem with that is...
She could go back and do it again if she wanted the other way.
Right. Well, the problem is that the neighborhood business zone was going to allow the community to have some restrictions on that property, that just zoning a business is not going to enable it to do. And we forgot the Joe's question of, we need more businesses in town, yes, we do. There are plenty of areas in town where they can be businesses, I see no reason why they can't be business elsewhere. And as much as I like the flower shop, and I'm a client of Darlene, so it does make it uncomfortable, but nevertheless, it is what it is, and the property was bought for a certain purpose, and now I hate changing things in midstream after the fact, to change things, I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's right. And I do think that the question is not with Darlene's business, it's a great business, home business, exactly what you'd like it to be, but the problem is what's next? And we can't have any assurances to what that is, and I think it just opens it up to a can of worms that I'm not interested in seeing in our area. Was that not also designated something else different? Was someone investigating that in terms of its historical significance, that area of town?
That's another issue, but I'm not going to talk about it this evening.
Is it not related to this?
Whether it is historical or not, it's not related. They are talking about making the area a historic area.
And what does that stood to that?
Okay.
It is a non-conforming lot, so if somebody wanted to use it for another kind of business, they couldn't. I mean, if they tore the building down, they would have no, not enough room to build something else. Dunkin' Donuts is certainly not going to come over. They can't.
Well, that's another issue.
Um, there were Gilead Fabian, South Kingman Street, just because I want to make the best educated decision here. The flower shop on the corner that Amy Dow spoke of, the one that's no longer open, what is the zoning there? Can someone tell me?
Yes. That's residential zone.
And that was never changed to commercial and changed back to residential or anything like that?
No, it was residential, but it was used in agricultural industry, so that's why they could do that.
Oh, gray area.
Well, they grew things, and the agricultural act in Massachusetts says you can grow things.
Now, the assessors' office is an office, correct? But is that residential there, or is that...
That's residential as well.
Okay. What about the library? The library building is...
That whole area is all residential right there, so the library is as well.
Okay, so, we are operating an office and a coffee shop in a residential area, correct?
Clarification, we are all operating, those, that's town property.
I don't operate the coffee shop and the assessors' office, I may pay taxes for those buildings, but, am I, am I correct?
Yes. Yeah, there is some pre-nonconformant uses there as well.
Pre-nonconformant?
The library was there, obviously, while people was on it, and the town, there is an exception in the town bylaw for town property.
Is that a town bylaw, or is that a state bylaw?
It's a town bylaw, it is, it allows use, excuse me.
Good evening, Catherine Doyle, Town Counsel. What Mr. Maxie is referring to is there is a provision in Section 4.1.1 of the bylaws that allows use by the town of Lakeville as of right in every district in town.
Could you repeat that, please? I really didn't get it, sorry.
Okay, sure. In your zoning bylaws, there is a specific section, Section 4.1.1, that talks about uses and what is allowed in each district. One of those provisions says that a use by the town of Lakeville, such as the library, such as the assessors' office, is permitted as of right in any district in town.
Okay, so, I don't want to hear anything from the crowd, because what I'm going to say is ridiculous, but does this mean if the town of Lakeville wanted to operate an inappropriate business there, they could? Doesn't matter of the zoning? Well, she's the, she's the legal counsel for the town, so I would expect her to give us an answer.
Yes.
The use by the town of Lakeville is not defined in the zoning bylaw as limited in any way, however, I would anticipate that a use by the town of Lakeville would be interpreted by a court to have reasonable restrictions, so, something...
Could you put that in the vernacular form?
Sure.
I didn't go to law school.
It couldn't be something, it couldn't be something, as you said, outlandish. It would, it would have to be something, you know, that consistent with the use by the town of Lakeville.
Okay. Let's just get this, I just want to be sure I'm making the best educated vote here.
You're trying the patience, so you better make this one your last question.
Well, I'm really not, because I really don't understand how somebody can run a business out of the library, and we can have an office building there too, but yet we can't grant somebody a permit to run a flower shop. I mean, it's all residential, and even though...
No, it's not a permit, it's not, none of this says that she's going to run a flower shop. This says that that piece of land is going to be zoned business. That's what the warrant article says.
Okay.
It's got nothing to do with the flower shop, except it happens to be there.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, got to clarify something real quick. If the town decided to sell the library and the assessors' building, they would have to be used in a residential use.
to be used in a residential use. Right. All right, we have a number of people in line, and I respect that, and I don't care how long the line is, but I would like people to address new points of view, okay? Go ahead.
Cynthia Biswell, 235 Main Street, again. I would like someone on the board to please clarify to me, to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. We are not going after Darlene's flower shop, we're trying to stop it from going business zone because of the uses that can happen there. Is there another means to let her operate? Is there a variance she can go for? I understand that she applied for a home occupation permit, but because she built on and then added and added, and she got too big for what she said she was going to do, which was just a small catering business, now she's retail and all this, she overtook the amount of space allowed for a home occupation permit, is that correct? Is there a variance or anything that the town would allow or could allow or that she could apply for, so we don't open this business zone can of warrants?
I'm out, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I think the logical person to ask is the planning board.
Use variances are not allowed, and retail sales are not something that's allowable in home occupation bylaw, so there's no way that a variance could be issued by the zoning board of appeals for retail sales in a residential zone.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I believe that answers if she wants to go retail, but her original intent was not to be retail. If I'm correct, her original application was for catering, but now she wants it to be anything.
Well, that's changed.
That's changed.
I would assume that's changed, that's why she is here.
Okay, and that's what scares me, we continue to change, 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 until we lose control.
Am I correct, Darlene, in saying that she doesn't, you don't want to use it just as a... I don't want to speak for you.
That's the purpose of the...
That's what I thought, thank you. Mr. McQueen?
I would like to call the question, Mr. Moderator.
Question has been called, has it been seconded?
Seconded.
The motion has been made and seconded. Now, we are not voting on the motion, we are voting to stop debate on the question, and it takes a two-thirds vote. Are we ready to call the question?
Yes.
All in favor of calling the question, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to calling the question, please raise your cards. I see one card, therefore I declare it passed by the necessary two-thirds, which means we move to a vote without debate. This is going to require a two-thirds vote, and counters are going to have to count. All in favor of Article 9, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to Article 9, please raise your cards. Twenty-six.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Forty-four. This will take a second. twelve against, I'm sorry, one hundred and ninety? Sorry, ninety-two, eighty-two in favor, ninety-two opposed, and it is defeated. It would have needed one hundred and thirty votes to pass. Article 9 is defeated. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, and I'll try to be fast, because I know we all want to get on one Patriots. I move that the town vote will accept DeMaranble Drive as a townway as laid out by the Board of Selections and to authorize the selection to acquire by gift, an easement or fee simple in the way and any related easements as shown on a plan on file with the town clerk drawn by Cullinan Engineering Company, Inc., entitled Road and Drain Jazzville, DeMaranble Subdivision, Second Street, Lakeville, Mass., dated November 8, 2007.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, would you like to speak to it?
Mr. Moderator, this is a subdivision that the planning board has approved, and we want to take, accept it as a townway.
Thank you, has the Highway Supervisor had a chance to take a look at it? Mr. Hackett?
As superintendent of streets, I approve the acceptance.
You recommend approval? Thank you. Finance committee, have any recommendation on this one?
Finance committee recommends approval.
Thank you. I see no one in the microphone to ask any further questions, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of Article 10, majority vote, raise your cards, thank you, you may put them down. Before I get to the negative vote, the planning board have a hearing on this one? Just say so where you are.
Yeah, if you had a hearing on it, you voted to lay it out.
Thank you, going to have to vote yes again. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see a few opposed, I declare passed by majority vote. I will now entertain a motion.
Hold on.
It is all, motion's been made, seconded. Seconded, all in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, opposed, I see no opposition at all, thank you for being patient.
Patriots.
Thank you.